We go over to them. Something south to south.
Yeah.
Out here, right?
Okay, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll wait for how long we're waiting.
Start away.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Marley Miller present.
Mary Ann Beckford present, Sue Phillips present.
Jeff Hancock present.
Ms. Timorakal present.
Hey, Jeff, please present.
Bob Turner present.
Tanya Reno present.
And Quinn Berman present.
Okay, everybody got their minutes from the, uh, January meeting.
January meeting.
It says December, but then.
Oh, it says Max.
Oh, these are mine from the January meeting.
Oh, yeah, I bet you guys will, yeah.
Are these mine from tonight?
Yeah.
Or they're yours?
So they got my name on them? No, those are yours.
Okay, sorry, I was reading my ones from last month.
Okay, I motion to approve the January twenty seventh.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alrighty, and Suzie, you wanna do the treasures report?
The, uh, beginning balance, December thirty first, was eight hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Cash receipts, uh, negative of cash receipts.
Because that was the two thousand. That it came into one month and I took it out the next month that we transferred, so that's why.
And we've got cash disbursements of eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents in the left of balance, January thirty first, uh, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and two cents.
Okay, so any questions or any comments if not, can I get a motion to approve the reporting submitted?
I'll make a motion to approve the treasures report.
I'll second it.
Okay, Sue?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Tan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Jim is here tonight, um, to talk to us about, uh, something that appears that the city's been working on for months that none of us knew about, uh, to put a storm sewer through James Park. If you look, you have the maps there. You'll see where Joe Green surveyed it on October, what's that one? If you look down in the corner of this one, October the fourteenth. And then on, uh, this one, on January sixth, a resolution was passed for an easement that we didn't know anything about. And the rest of it, you'll see there's a copy of the easement agreement as well that everyone has there. Did you have a chance to look it up?
Yeah, I've got some questions on this, so.
We'll let Jim go first, and then we can, we can ask you the questions.
Okay, for those of you in the room, Bill, not I'm Jim, I'm the chairman of the street and service commission here in the city, and, uh, I received a message yesterday to kind of, because I, I wasn't really up to date, obviously, today now I did do a bunch of homework and, uh, what it's gonna consist of is a, a storm sewer which is gonna, it's going to actually start on, up on Franklin Street, up on O'Fall, current O'Fall and then Franklin, and run straight, uh, we'll be, we'll be going straight west down Franklin Street to James Street, cross James Street, and then right straight down the south edge of James Park to go to, and finishes up at a seventy-two inch storm drain that runs across the property, and it's actually Fairgrounds property. Is where it ends up. I don't know what else I can tell you about it, uh, if you have some questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. But that, that's kind of the gist of it, it's just kind of a straightforward, looking for an easement to, uh, to put that pipe down through your property.
And the pipe is in, how big?
It's gonna be a twenty-four inch.
Okay. And goes.
This is a storm sewer or what?
It's, it's.
And goes into a seventy-two inch.
Going, yes. Which, which runs across the, uh, the Fairgrounds property, and actually goes, I think it dumps out over and, uh, pages body shop area into a ditch over there.
So Jim, I can't do like, Gary, you know that big, it's out in the middle of our park, is that where it's going in? Or if you walk that half road by the door doors?
Yes, down that, straight down or along that tree line. You know, between the, between the complex and James. Parking lot, that tree line, beyond the, the north side of that.
All right, 'cause that's my one question, this says you have the right to remove all trees, shrubs. So I mean, I think.
No.
I mean, that's a question, then it says no permanent buildings on easement. And I don't know, you know, how, how wide this will be, and Gary, maybe you could tell us, do you, do you ever see?
I, I don't.
What was put in here that's a lot bigger, right, for the sanitation?
No, I think that was about, about the same size, yeah.
So that can kind of give you a visual, the mess.
Great size.
It's gonna make, it's pretty good size.
Twenty-four inches, two foot, I mean, it's, it's a nice size, I, yeah, but it's not, I mean, it's not a, it's a straight shot, and my thing is, you know, we ran all the way across there and under and over, and if you're running a straight shot, I'm sure if, if, if need be, they could angle to miss a tree over.
But will they?
If it's, if it's in the contract, they have to. Is my thing, I mean, that's the way I would have.
Well, here's my thoughts on this, and you can all say what you think, but I think it's something that we all need to give some review to and, uh, discuss some more.
Or see where, see exactly where the line is.
Because we're really kind of working on some pretty short notice here.
Where do they want to do the construction?
And we'd like to get started as soon as we could, the contract had been let out, tell us.
See, I find that amazing.
It's, it's the contractor.
Besides, we find that amazing.
I find that amazing.
How do you let a contractor something you don't even know you're gonna get?
Right. Yeah.
You and Rocky spoke again this afternoon, correct?
No, I, I haven't, I haven't spoken to Mr. Mark. But I'm just throwing out some other issues, Jim. I think you're just the messenger, but it says grantee shall have the sole right and its sole discretion to permit grantor and other third parties to tap on. And what, what does that mean? You could have, you know.
You wouldn't be tapping on in, in the park because.
I don't think they have anything else.
We would be the only ones that want, would wanna tap onto it in, in the park.
Then what is this number four?
That's gotta be north, I mean, east of the park, wouldn't it, wouldn't that be?
Well, this is an agreement with the park, so it's a registered park district property.
And that might be an issue that you, you want, wanna have figured out.
That's what I'm throwing it out, I think it's an issue. The trees are an issue, um, building issue, if you're gonna do a building that you might be on anywhere near there. And then four, it's.
Cause that, that more.
Better than I'm.
You know, there are, there are Rocky questions, you know, I can't, uh.
So is, is that what's standing?
I, I can't, I can't answer that because I'm not having.
I've heard my.
Introduce that.
Yeah, go straight on.
So not, this, whatever this drawing here is, that's just showing.
It would go back and tap into a line back by where the midgets are.
Yeah.
That.
So it's running straight on there.
Straight out there.
That's a straight shot around the, around the area, sounds like, right?
Right, which is always a beautiful choice.
I don't know if that tree's right there at the boundary or not.
Yes.
There are?
Yes.
And just another minor thing, on number six, it, it has us paying recording fees. I mean, I don't.
Wow, what are we getting out of this stuff?
Yeah.
Lost the true line.
The fees, the fees for the entire, grantee shall pay the fees to the title insurance company, recording fees. So, I think that would be another question I have.
What is happening?
Number six.
Number six, sorry, I said six.
I just don't like the feeling that.
It goes spicy.
Okay, I could get, they did.
We, we, we didn't have that much of a, hey, this is what we want, time to think about it.
Look, a mincer.
They've already gotten, uh, what's his name to come out and, as a contractor.
And this, yeah, this would been sometime, this would been sometime. And I thought it was all, everybody was aware of what was going on.
No, no one's come here.
And, uh.
No one's come to me.
No.
Well, I, uh, I'm, you know, I'm like Quinn, I'm a man.
And we don't, we don't.
No, no, I'm just stating the fact.
We understand, Jim.
I'm not taking you, Jim.
No, no, no.
You're a good guy.
They just sent you, you're put up.
Don't, don't use the messenger.
They should have sent a letter, and it should have been return receipt requested showing that it had been signed for, that they would have gotten legal notice of. So by them doing it this way.
I, I, I don't really know of the fact, and Rocky told me that him and Quinn had been in a conflict with this sometime back, emails or however, of course.
He sent me an email.
Yeah.
That, uh.
What did you tell him, did you tell him to contact me in the office?
Um, I can't remember.
Thought that's what you said when we spoke today. That you asked him if I knew anything about it.
Yeah, I don't think no one ever approached.
No one approached any of us, because when you copied the email to me and I said, I have it, I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, that's what started, cause I forwarded it to Mary Ann, and she said, well, I, nobody knows anything about it. So then.
But you, you did.
I, I had this, Bruce brought this in to me, the big one.
When?
In October, and I said, would you like to be on the agenda, and he said, no, we are nowhere close to being ready to come talk to anybody. Fine, never heard another word, Christmas, yada, yada, then last month, it was exactly the last board meeting, I was at the volleyball game, and he said, hey, how's that going, and I said, as far as I know, nothing has, and he goes, no, Rocky and Quinn should have this all worked out, and I said, well, if they do, nothing's been brought to the board.
But here's the deal, it has to come to the board.
Exactly, and I, and he, and he kind of looked at me and I was like, as far as I know, nothing. Well, and I meant to say something to Quinn that night, but then Jenna was here, and so I didn't say anything, and it was that next day that Rocky emailed you stuff like this, cause I'm sure Bruce said, why hasn't the board heard anything about it?
Twenty-eighth, this time? Yeah, twenty-eighth of January.
Yep, so Bruce thought it was taken care of as well.
Well, I think we're gonna.
Failure to communicate here.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna put it on the table.
Yeah, I think we just go against the law.
But Jim, if you could relay those questions on, or if you want me to talk to the mayor or Rocky, I can, but those are.
I would say probably the best way to proceed would be you through Rocky, and then he can, uh, cause the mayor presently on vacation, won't be back, he'll be back next Monday. But if you could correspond with, uh, with Rocky, and, um, and I can go, I'll give Rocky a call tomorrow, he's also on vacation. And, uh, it's on that you will be contacting him and we'll move forward from that point on. Cause I'm, you know, I'm sorry I don't have any more information, but I'm.
Does anybody else have any questions they want me to ask or?
I don't know, I just got it. It'd be nice if you guys got it earlier in front of, you know.
Well, we just got it this afternoon.
Well, he said he got it in the January, right?
He did, but he didn't, he never heard anything back from anyone. And she didn't, no, no one's called her, I got it at three o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah, so I mean, I can, you need to have check review.
Yeah.
We don't wanna delay necessarily, but we still gotta.
I'd like to know what the delay was, why, once I got everything and we didn't get anything.
You're talking to the wrong person.
So who's the right one, aren't you the head of this committee?
Uh, yes, sir, committee I am.
And who, who, you know, I don't wanna be smart, but who is the right person to talk to?
I, I would, I would discuss with, with the mayor and, and Rocky would be.
The city engineer comes up to.
Yeah, the city engineer. It actually started out with, uh, Mr. Dorchiness, that this was a problem, that this is actually out in his, uh, his area, and so, uh, he contacted Rocky and, and then, uh, they got hold Joe Green. Joe Green drew it all up and brought it back and, uh, and it went through, I mean, I knew about it, knew where it was gonna be, knew what the price was gonna be and everything like that, but how all the paperwork followed through, I had no idea.
Okay.
Okay, well.
Well, thanks for coming, Jim.
Yeah.
You're not too bloody, are you? We don't have anything personal, Bob.
I think it looks okay.
Nope, I'm not taking it that way.
Well, good, okay, good.
Nothing personal, honey.
Oh, I understand. But if you just follow up with Rocky, I'll give a call in the morning and, uh, see what goes there.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Thank you, honey, thank you.
Okay, uh,
See ya.
We need to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating budget.
Where is it, it's going, is it, is this the Fairgrounds or the here position? That looks like Fairgrounds.
Did you see what I, did I see what I emailed on?
Yes.
Looks, looks a little bit better than what we discussed earlier.
Yeah, sure.
No kidding.
I thought those, they didn't look right for sixty down that much.
Yeah, I told, I told him, I said, I'm having a day job experience here.
We've done this bullshit road before.
Cause that's, that's road, right?
Franklin, okay, that's right.
So it's going down along Franklin.
Where that dead end kind of road is.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the.
So it'll go all the way down.
Right, straight down. Right? By the trees.
Right, that huge line of trees, that makes another huge line of trees.
Yeah.
That's where you nest in the Fairgrounds, right?
Yes, it'll go straight through.
Okay.
It'll, by our. Be close to the border of John Brad and James, well.
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah, the parking lot, then there's those trees, I'm assuming it's right on the other side of that.
That's the dead end road.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, right along the side of that dead end road, straight out to the Fairgrounds. To the, the county part of the Fairgrounds with the quarter measure.
You can come talk to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What the hell was this then?
See, I'm not real sure.
I can move a tenth foot and not take out the road tree.
Yeah.
No, no, I have.
They can stick.
Well, and the issue would be two.
I've been into it with Joe Green before.
Oh, I know Joe Green.
Well, and just to keep, the issue is too, whatever they put it with that easement, if we can't ever build anything depending on, I mean, we've got, you know, in the future, if we have plans for James Park, but we can't ever have anything within twenty feet of where that line goes to, just something to keep, keep in mind as well.
Absolutely.
Why, why should, why should we be paying the fees for?
Well, there you go, that's, absolutely.
Right.
We, we, we did this a couple of years ago over the house over there, so this is not the first time we've been in this situation.
Maybe a process, huh?
Uh-huh. Does anybody have any questions on this, we had that, uh, pre-budget meeting, Bob and Kay and Sue and I and Mary Ann.
Yep.
Kay and, yeah, Kay and you were here.
Were you here, Kay?
Okay, are we, we're at the button, all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this, Charlie? Do you call for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Great, you're welcome.
Did you make a motion, Sue?
No, we're just asking everybody if they had any questions. The heady questions before we call for a motion on it.
I'm gonna kill Kate when he said, then email out, cause I emailed you that one. I had that on my sheet.
Well, what happened is my keys didn't add up that way.
I found that out when I went back and added it at home, I'm like, oh, yeah, surprising as hell.
That's okay, though, it just patted the community.
It just worked, worked out fine there.
Yes. Yeah. And if I'm gonna be off, that's where.
Well, the problem with it, go ahead. All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we pass this budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that motion.
Sue?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Tan?
Yes.
Okay. So we have to work, huh?
Okay, yeah, so we'll put mine, I'll adopt, I just add Mary Ann's to my budget, so that'll be on file next month, and we'll pass it two months from now, cause it has to be on file thirty days.
Thirty days.
So.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Here, what's the latest date it can be? Is it June?
No, we could probably wait all the way to December, but I don't, I don't like the.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, I couldn't.
No, we don't wanna be late.
Okay.
Let's just be, move forward. Okay, uh, reports, Gary?
Not a whole lot, uh.
Got no trees?
Service our mowers, got, getting them ready for next year, well, we're ready, uh, when it's not raining, we're working on trees around the pond.
Have you heard anything from him?
Not since the last time he was here, and when, uh, what was it, last month? We talked a little bit about that he said that he hoped to be done by the time he got into fields this spring. But.
Turn out time.
Yeah, I know, I, I haven't seen, but it's been raining, I mean.
It always rains, so sometimes.
I, I understand, I'm just, that when it rains, we're working on our Christmas lights.
Okay.
So that's pretty much.
We don't have a timeframe for all that bid, did we? We probably should have something in.
Well, but it's, how can you timeframe something like that?
We gotta have some kind of reasonable.
Well, yeah, some kind of reasonable time period, but I mean, doesn't it say that he'll be paid when it's completed?
Yeah, he doesn't get paid till done.
So he's not gonna get paid till it gets done, so.
No, you can have it during the summer with a lot of activity out there.
No, and we don't want that, but then we're also at the mercy of the weather. Mother nature, you know, we can't, he can't get down in there with a bunch of heavy equipment. I mean, around in, probably all of it, I mean, he could probably do some points from.
Well, I understand, well, we're gonna have to shut off the road, go into the back part of the park while he's doing it.
Right.
Cause he can't, I'm not, you know.
He can't.
He can't be going back and forth and, and have to worry about cars and.
And kids and everything, yeah, so if he, sooner the better is.
Right, I, I fully agree.
But I mean, then again, we're, you know, he has no more control over the weather than we do.
Right, I fully understand.
So I hope, let's all pray for.
It's always been wet down there in that spring, isn't it?
Well, yes, but.
That is only runs in.
That only runs down through the stream, I mean.
Down the middle, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you've got the whole, that's pretty big to.
You can work both sides and then push that mud all, all off to the side if.
And what's he gonna do with the mud, I forgot, is he gonna put in back, Perky's old thing?
The burn it's going into Perky's, but we got some ravines over there that need, that we can, we can fill some of them in too.
And I will remind him to get his mud out here too.
Yeah.
He didn't have time before we left.
Because if not, I'm gonna go with my old plan.
Don't do it, cause I don't want you to have to do things twice. Okay, I'll remind you, Mary Ann?
Um, okay, on February fifth, I completed the twenty nineteen RPF, um, I, PRF, the work comp audit papers, that's all been sent off, on the sixth, we met with Hillary Waddell from I-Parks member service, she's our partner, uh, Marlene Bailey and I did, and she gave us a lot of good information. She looked into a couple of things that we asked about, got me the information I needed for the aquatics grant, and so I know a little bit more of who to get ahold of at I-Parks for certain things, I've asked about insurance, they do not offer any type of group insurance, so it's all strictly individual. Um, worked on budget presentation or preparations, of course. Um, the twenty nineteen investment status for IMRF, the returns came out, the return was a nineteen point seven, uh, percent percent investment return after fees. The assets rose from thirty-eight point eight billion to forty-four point six billion, they had a very good year. Um, making IMRF ninety-one percent funded, which is, of course, one of the best in the nations.
The best in the state.
Definitely, definitely, real good in the state. I have, they're late and never, I'll pass around for you guys, the Christmas in the Park breakdown from twenty nineteen Christmas in the Park. And then, um, today I did apply for the aqua, the aquatics grant, five hundred dollars, which will help offset the eight hundred dollars that we paid for our new, well, not new, but now annual fee we paid to, Jeff Ellis. That was coming, it was on the brain, it was out of mouth. Um, and last but not least, I received a letter from the golf course. Uh, the last couple of years, the improvements has wrote a check for a hundred dollars to sponsor a tee box out there. And so it's that time to do it again, so I just wanted, you know, the, okay, I'll go ahead and write a check for a hundred dollars for our, the park to sponsor the tee, the improvements as well.
Okay, so I can make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Um, we, we haven't made a motion before I looked back.
Oh, we haven't?
No, since it was the improvements, everybody was just an overall agreement.
All right, then we're good.
Okay, that, I, I wanted to double check that.
Okay.
Um, I think, oh, tomorrow morning I will be attending the legislative breakfast and, um, hopefully cornering Mr. Peter and asking him to do us a little favor. We'll see how far I get. Write a letter regarding, um.
We can write a bill.
A bill, or finding someone who can, to, um, kind of adjust the minimum wage with the age group, the summer health, so.
Well, to do it, what, we talked to Avery Born Friday, Sue and I, and that's what she recommended, because she said they had tried to originally make it a regional thing, so based on income, well, it's like comparing Chicago and Taylorville, you know? It's just.
Or Taylorville to Cairo.
Right, yeah, you know, so.
Right.
That's what she suggested, to kind of make it a grassroots movement, to try to get all the smaller park districts involved, cause she said she's already heard from, what, Nokomas, Litchfield, uh, she said Hana? There were like four of them, she's already called.
She talked about.
And that are concerned about their pools and different things that, you know, they're not gonna be able to keep them afloat due to the increase in the minimum wage over the next several years, well, good, yeah. You'd be really nice to Mr. Peter.
I'll do my best.
Natty space.
Bailey?
Okay, uh, we had our senior lunch on the thirteenth of, uh, soup and pasta, the weather was terrible, so about half a. We were lucky to have anybody, I think. Um, Friday, the twenty-first, the kids, our kids weren't able to have their February dance, so that was nice. Um, all of my pool binders are done, other than my lifeguard license, which of course I won't have done until May. Um, I've been working on getting information from other pools about how they have found their engineers and how they've, um, come to, you know, get new pools and everything, it's a lot of information, I have had a couple pools, though, that have, um, responded to my emails with, you know, here's some of the paperwork that we did, here is, you know, X, Y, and Z. Um, Carbondale invited us down to come look at their pool. Um, I, I would love to, I was kind of waiting for a break in the weather, so that I could actually walk outside and see theirs.
It's a little warmer.
Uh-huh, um, but the woman I talked to was extremely helpful, and she said, they not only got the, the one grant that we were talking about for the full two point five million, they also got an Ausland and a tourist grant, which I nev, we'd never even heard of, so they, so she, she knows her, her stuff. Um, and I will say also, what they did, um, for Carbondale, is they had just, they had nothing, there was, wasn't a remodel, it was a, here's a blank piece of land, here's the pool, so, and it was turnkey, three point seven million, that's fencing, that's everything. Um, and she said to pretty much expect a hundred thousand dollars for every lap lane you wanna put in, to kind of give you an idea too. So.
That's.
Three point seven million or something? Three point seven million or so?
Yeah, theirs was three point seven.
The only difference being, if we, well, okay, yeah, if you looked at ours, the way it's constructed now, you don't have, you wouldn't have to put in, if we did something similar, you wouldn't have to put in the long lap lanes.
Right, yeah, and I mean, and again, you're talking like they had to do fencing, they had to do their lighting, running water, we've already got all of that, yeah. So I, I, I was optimistic with that, I thought that was an optimistic price, and the fact that they were able to get those grants and everything. So again, I haven't reached out to any engineers yet, because I'm still talking with these other pools on what verbiage they kind of used, and, you know, who they, who and why they went with their engineer.
Right.
So, kind of switching gears with that, but still continuing on, the first day of school for this next school year, they've released, will be Tuesday, August eighteenth, which is a whole week later than what they've been doing, which gives us possibly twelve to thirteen whole weeks, depending on, on, with the snow days and all of that. So, but it does give us twelve weeks with day camp. That'll be a little bit iffy, we'll find out closer to, because Vision Way will still get out before Memorial Day, but right now, public school, and I don't know if St. Mary's is the same with their snows, snow days don't get out until the Thursday after Memorial Day, so there's quite a big difference in there.
I don't.
I don't know, I didn't know if St. Mary's followed that or not, so, we'll be, I'll be working on that.
I think, I was thinking there was a snow day that they went anyway when everybody else did.
Okay, so it's going to definitely affect, I mean, weather permitting, we would still open that Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, but it may affect how we are able to be open that week if high schoolers are still in, and how many college, because I have the Ausland.
High school.
And if kids are still in school, and, you know, maybe we don't open until three o'clock on those.
College ought to be down there.
College, yeah, but if I only have four col, you know what I mean, we'll just have to see how many I get.
See what your applicants have.
Yeah, so just something to keep in your head, we'll know more. I am getting applications in, I do, I definitely need more lifeguard applications, so I'll be putting another thing out there.
Did you send them to your old guards, or?
I, Elizabeth sends a, a big message out to all of them. But a lot of my, like, regular guards were in that year to where they kind of need to do an internship, so I think I'm losing a good four or five of them to that, unfortunately. And of course, everybody wants to work concessions, so I've got, probably got thirty people that want to work concessions, and four that want to be lifeguards. We'll figure it out. Then I'm also working on the spring/summer flyer, I don't have it done yet, because I am waiting on a few more things to come together for the pool, some sign up information for sports, a few coaches are still waiting to get back to me, and I'm working on something for Music Under the Chautauqua, so I can put all of that in there, I want to do a few things at the pool different, a few things of Music Under the Chautauqua a little bit different too.
Good, sounds good.
That's what I got.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, I need a motion to accept the reports.
I'll make that motion. Call selected.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I need a motion for approval for payment of bills, please.
I'll make a motion to approve all the payment of the bills.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sue?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Tany?
Yes.
Now I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Darn, Kay, second it, Tany.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, can stay here.
Okay.